Meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. I'll please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Led by me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation.
Let's pray. God, our Father, thank you for the privilege of meeting tonight to discuss how this community grows. Father, I pray your blessings upon all the men and women in this room who have the concerns for that which will bless families, which will strengthen our kids. And Father, we'll bring you honor and glory as families thrive. So, Father, we pray for that wisdom and knowledge, your guidance, your vision, Lord, and we thank you in Jesus' name.
Let's remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you all. Clerk Treasurer January, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, sir. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Here.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We don't have any petitions, communications, acknowledgements, or remonstrations this evening. Moving on to public hearings, Attorney Svetnov.
Yes, there's been a review of the proof of publication for the first town hearing. It appears to be in order and in conformance with Indiana law. So it's my recommendation that we continue at this time.
Okay, we will read these later in the agenda under second reading ordinances. This particular one, ordinance 24-03, is appropriation of additional money of $75,072. Is there any public comment on this ordinance 24-03? Is there any public comment? The records show there's no public comment. Attorney Svetnov, next one, ordinance 24-04.
And along with the first, the first public hearing, these advertisements appear to be in order and in conformance with Indiana law. So at this time, I suggest that we go ahead and move forward regarding ordinance number 2404.
Thank you, sir. Again, this will be read later in the agenda under second reading ordinances. This is a fund, 2203 Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund. The amount is $50,000. Is there any public comment on this ordinance 24-04? Is there any public comment? The records show there is no public comment, and we'll bring this up later on the agenda. Thank you, attorney.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the consent agenda. We have the accounts payable register voucher approval of March 12th, the AP voucher summary for ARP purchases of March 12th, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of February 27th, and the request from the FOP Event Center request for a discount rate of 50%. With your pleasure, council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of the consent agenda. Open for comments. Mr. January, did we update this or remove the charges for the TIF districts that are on here? We have a Mississippi TIF in two places. Are those being paid from the right place? They're all Mississippi TIFs, actually, expenses.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we have not removed anything.
Okay.
And I'm looking for that particular report.
I believe those should be on the RDC registered voucher. Is that right, Sean?
Yes.
I am missing that. Excuse me, I will get back with you on that.
You're missing the voucher here. I actually circled them around here. I think there's three entries that were from the TIF. Is that right, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we certainly do have three from the Mississippi TIF. No, I do not recall we did not remove that.
Okay, so what I'll ask then, Mr. Pettit, your motion to approve the consent agenda, would you please amend it to include removing the Butler Fairman expenses of $92.40, the First Group Engineers of $23.98, $24, and the traffic management program of $18,000? That was for the speed hump maintenance removal. Those should be paid out of the proper entity. Is that right, Mr. Pettit?
Well, if I'm, if I'm scoring this correctly, Mr. President, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 on the first page that need to be taken out.
I didn't see all those.
If we're buying squad cars, it says Mississippi Street TIF.
Oh, sure does. Missed that.
Here's another one for Butler Fairman for, on the second page, for $92.40. It's going to have to come out. And again, I know that I discussed this clearly with, with staff, that the fourth Tuesday is the RDC meeting. And we had several years ago, for the benefit of the new council members, we had a finding that said that anything out of the, we had to have a separate claims list for the RDC meeting. So we started having those for the past, Margie, I don't know, four years, three or four years, we've had a separate claims list, so.
Yeah, I see them now, Sean.
We need to, another First Group Engineering and...
Mr. Pettit, can you highlight those and pass them down for Eric? He don't have the voucher?
I'll do that.
Okay.
It's not in my pocket.
All right.
Yeah.
We'll pass it down.
All of the Mississippi TIFs are being removed.
Well, why don't we?
Yeah, you could just do it that way simply, just...
Let, Mr. President to counsel, obviously, Mr. January can pay bills in an emergency situation. Can we brief present this consent agenda in two weeks? And that'll be at the, at the RDC meeting and at the council meeting, Joe, and have him take all of these off and just let him, because I, I've only gone through the first two pages. Now, I want to sit here and circle these. Let the staff, let Angie and Joanna work with Eric and his staff and fix the claims list, and whatever has to be paid, he can pay in an emergency by law. So we don't have to approve it tonight.
There's two ways to do this. You can defer action on the, on the accounts payables voucher summary, or you can go ahead and just state that what you'll allow the clerk treasurer to do is to remove all the AP entries, APV entries, then include the TIF districts, and then recalculate the amount of APVs owed, and then issue payment. We really probably don't want to delay payment to vendors if we can, if we can avoid that. So my, my recommendation is at this time that we allow Mr. January to proceed forward, but with the caveat that he remove any and all APV entries that have to do with TIF districts and to put those on the RDC.
Claims list for the 26th.
Claims list for the 26th.
Is that your motion then, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, I'll modify my motion according to legal counsel.
Mrs. Yuzlak, your second stand?
I will second it.
Mr. January, any questions on what we're doing?
No, no, exactly what we're doing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have no presentations tonight. Standing committees, Budget and Finance, Mrs. Neal.
No report for Budget and Finance.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, I need to call a meeting desperately, and I apologize for my derelict duties on that, because I know Joe and Ricardo have a stack of ordinances that we need to review.
Actually, Mr. Pettit, if I might interrupt, what we're going to do is Ricardo's going to come to our next work, workshop and present those, on the 20th, and present those ordinances to the full town council then.
Great.
So he can get a jump.
So then we can make a, we can make a recommendation out of the workshop for the 26th, correct?
Certainly.
And do those on first reading?
Certainly.
Okay.
We need to move these along.
Yep, thank you, Joe. No problem.
Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Thank you. Street Department, Mrs. Yuzlak.
With the Street Department, we've been having some cleanup of branches. I had a mailbox replaced in Crescent Lake by Steve. Waste Management knocked out the mailbox in their cleaning, and that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have been working with Hubanger Landscaping to, for this upcoming spring for our existing baskets at Town Hall and for the beautification that's done on 93rd. We're not going to be using Hubangers. Their total price is going to run us about $56,000 to use them. Instead, we're wanting to, decided to use Zandres to use our, to get our baskets, which is going to run us almost about $3,000, so it's a huge difference. Street Department will take over the responsibility, they so graciously said they would take over the responsibility of making sure that our flowers are watered, that 93rd is upkept. This was mainly due to the fact that they had to do quite a bit of it last year, and we were not pleased with the results from what Hubanger did for the amount of money that the town spent on flowers and keeping our shrubs and just keeping our town beautiful. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and use Zandres this year to get our hanging baskets for the town.
Motion by Mrs. Neal.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hardaway. Open for discussion. Ms. Neal, are we also going to include baskets at the community center and also a couple planters, I believe we talked about in our meeting?
Yes, we're going to do hanging baskets at the community center, and there's also going to be planters. We're looking to get them placed on, on the event side and also in the very front of the building. So the Town Hall and the center will significantly, significantly look alike, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you add that to your motion so it's all...
Yes, to add the motion also to include the Barbara Dean Center for the hanging baskets and the new pots.
Ms. Hardaway, is your second stand?
Yes.
Open for discussion. Mr. King, are you ready to take care of all this foliage in town?
Well, obviously, our foreman, Tracy Ryan, thinks so. Tracy's a master gardener, and it pains her every time she would drive down 93rd Avenue and see what Hubinger provided us last year, and she's going to tackle it, and she's going to do a tremendous job, I can tell you that.
We're going to need her cell phone numbers, Steve, if you don't mind.
I cannot give that information.
I'm on 93rd Avenue quite a bit, so...
She, she, she really takes pride in what she does. She planted our planters at the Street Department last year, and I, she did an amazing job, just totally amazing, so.
I'm excited to work.
She's, she's fantastic. She'll be just fine.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Neal.
We're also planning an upcoming meeting. I can't even think of his name, but I'm going to be planning an upcoming meeting, and that is for, to start looking at our new designs for the new town slogan and the entryway. So that meeting is forthcoming, and that's all.
That's exciting news. Environmental Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report, Mr. President. We did have, I don't know if it falls under this committee or not, we did have our meeting with Waste Management, and I don't know that Michael has heard anything back yet.
Not yet.
All I see in my neighborhood were, unfortunately, a lot of yellow tags this morning for my pickup in two, on Tuesday.
I don't know how we addressed that, counselor. Any suggestions on how we reach out to residents and ask them to pay their waste management bills? I don't know what to do. It's, I'm at a loss. There's 900 customers that haven't paid their bills in over three months, and Waste Management finally has said, we're not going to pick up anymore. And I don't blame them, you know, so unfortunately, it's going to affect the entire town.
Well, and we received information from the chief about an incident, was it last week, chief, with the residents chasing the truck down?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, it's one thing, you know, I don't know if there's miscommunication and that particular household paid and the driver didn't know when he passed by. You know, we've got, it's, it's a very tough situation, you know. The goal way back in the day, I speak as the old guy, 20 years ago, we didn't want to have five trucks going through a subdivision, you know, Monday, and then Tuesday, and then Wednesday, and beating up the roads with different trucks and leaking garbage juice all over, so we went to one hauler in different contracts, and now we're, you know, we're up against this with, you know, people not paying.
Should we have Mr. Svetnov reach out to them, to Ella, and just kind of get an update? It's kind of clear where we are.
Yeah, between Joe and Michael.
Well, I think, I think one of the things that we discussed in prior meetings was making sure that their billing list was up to date.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the things that is...
We're waiting on a...
And we're waiting on a response, because if you don't have the right person you're trying to bill, or you have two different names at that address, that can lead to confusion.
Sure.
So...
I didn't notice in my neighborhood that once they put the stickers on, the next week, people did pay the...
They did pay? Good.
So I will wait another week and see if, you know, if it's...
People start turning around? Yeah.
We did have just about everybody pay their trash bill.
Okay.
Good. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Ms. Hardaway.
The Personnel Policy Manual has adopted by reference in MMC Section 2-87, some new updated revised guidelines for establish a travel policy, establish a CDL training tenure requirement, tuition reimbursement, and receipt for the manual. These things are, have been worked on, and they will be going into the employee handbook as revised. Also, we have concluded our search for the Parks Director, and I, we have gone with David Byers. So he will be come after tonight's vote, hopefully, the new Director of Parks and Recreation. So I am making a motion to accept Mr. David Byers as our new Director of Parks and Recreation.
I second that.
Motion by Ms. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak to retain or hire, I should say, David Byers as our Director of Parks and Recreation. Is that based on updated information from later today?
Yes.
Excellent. Questions or comments on the motion? I probably have a clarifying question, if I may, Counselor. We're going to pay him per salary ordinance?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Is he the person that was also a Maryville resident?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And also, his father has served on the, I think, the BCA for years. So they've had a close tie with Maryville for years.
Hearing no other questions, this is personnel matter. Let's do a roll call vote, please, Mr. January.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Ms. Hardaway, motion carries.
Thank you. No other report at this time, Mr. President.
On the changes you mentioned, I'm assuming we're going to have a corresponding ordinance to add those items to the personnel?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Hardaway, you still have the floor.
I keep forgetting this back to back. Public Safety, nothing at this time. We will, I will request a meeting with fire and police to update our, and other department heads, I am sorry, to update our emergency action plan. We need to get that, we have one in place, it's just that it needs to be revised according to different departments, and that includes the clerk treasurer's office as well. So please be on the lookout for that email.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. The redevelopment, in concert with the economic development director, the town manager is on an interlocal cooperation agreement that will permit continued participation with the Gary Public Transportation Corporation in our support of the service along the Broadway Avenue corridor. Michael is also working with redevelopment staff to explore ways and means of tuning up our use of allocationary resources for facade and interior grants. Redevelopment Council suggested the possible need for a community development corporation. Angie and Joanna and Michael are looking into that. A couple of things for the, for the membership, since we're all, all here, and that would be Leona and Shawna and Keisha and Marge. I'm going to be calling workshops the next several meetings. The first one is going to be 5:00 on the 19th before the Plan Commission public hearing. The purpose of that workshop is to discuss the Whitcomb Street corridor improvements and now that it's out in Marge's ward, the impact of Liberty Estates, everyone taking those back roads to the county. So Robinson Engineering will be here, Randy Hall will be here. On the 26th, we'll be having a workshop to discuss a project out in my ward on Colorado, both sides of Colorado Street. BP, they used to be known as BP Lighthouse, they're now just BP. They want to put, install 1,500 solar panels on several different parcels on both sides of Colorado Street. And then the first Tuesday in April, do we have a workshop, Sheila, for Plan Commission in April?
I don't know yet.
All right, let me...
Let me just say, no one has filed.
Let me know then, because we, I'd like to bring in Structure Point as a part of the conference of plan. Rick has met with Structure Point, I've said it on a couple meetings, about a new town center, and they want to unveil for this building and the 16 acres that we own and back and some, some ideas on that. So it's in the Broadway TIF. These projects are RDC related, all of them, as far as the financing mechanism, so we'll be looking into that as well. I think that's all, Mr. President, right now for Economic Development.
Okay. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, thank you. I have contacted Matt Lake approximately on March 6th. We have got construction supposedly going on at 7456 Wilson Street. The developer, Mr. Rodriguez, he has been approved a few years ago through the Plan Commission and has done nothing so far except store his, his concrete structures on this park area. There are children playing there, and it can be some type of a turmoil later on. Matt Lake was very tenacious in answering my call, and he has put in writing that he contacted Mr. Rodriguez. And if you remember, Sheila, what is the date we approved him at the Plan Commission? It was a while back. Couple of years, right?
Couple of years ago, yes.
Sure, yeah. That's what I thought, a couple of years ago. So Mr. Lake has contacted Mr. Rodriguez, and now Mr. Rodriguez is saying he will proceed in the near future, near future, to start building. So we will see what happens. That used to be a park, and I have my eye on it, that was right around Wilson Street, and it was a real nice park. Somebody bought it and made a ballpark out of it. Now Mr. Rodriguez bought it, and he's going to build on it. So we'll see what happens.
Well, Sheila, is the approval still good?
It's still good. I think, I was on a correspondence with Matt. Matt has given him a deadline to bring in plans for his housing that he's going to build, and if he doesn't bring in by that deadline, he will have to move those structures.
He has to move them because the children are playing in those structures.
They're standing on them, and it's dangerous.
And they could hurt themselves. So we'll see what he does, Mr. Rodriguez. And then another Mr. Rodriguez called me a different, a different person. He's had a lot of problem with the Kaiser Ditch area being very dirty with debris, branches, et cetera. So we contacted Matt Lake, who in turn got a hold of the county surveyor, Bill Emerson, who in turn called me. So as soon as Bill gets the permits and his workload together, he will be out there to clean up that part of Kaiser Ditch.
Okay.
The other part of Kaiser Ditch, well, it's called No Name Ditch. That's, that's part of Kaiser Ditch, but it's No Name Ditch on Taney Street, and Mr. Matt Lake has taken care of the cleanup there. So so far, we're doing pretty good with these ditches. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Mr. President, to Mrs. Yuzlak, had a couple inquiries when I was at the community center, and I explained the new committee structure. So I told them I would bring it up to you, Margie, we, we need to get a Park and Rec Committee meeting going. And what I want to do is I want to go back last year to the last Dean and Barbara White Community Center Committee meeting. It was Jeff Minchuck, myself, and Leonard White.
Right.
And there were some outstanding Capitol things, Steve, that we had been talking about. We talked about the parking lot. I know Mike has been looking, and Mike Neal's been looking at some stuff. They talked about a possible storage building out there, a gravel lot for additional parking for Pop Warner. There's some internal things that they did in the Mike Anderson Event Center doors and things that Joe Corr, you know, took care of some punch list items, but we need to reconvene since this is going to fall under the Park and Recreation Committee. So if you'd be so kind as to think about, there's some things that, that staff want to talk to us about too, I think.
As soon as possible.
Yeah.
I will be so kind. Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Neal, did you, and I think we were talking the other day, we were at the Event Center for something, and the doors aren't yet repaired, right? The bars or the...
I'm not sure if that emergency door has gotten repaired yet. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
The outside door handles going to the, to the patio, I walked out with Barb Young, and those door handles hadn't been put on for the longest time, Rhonda. I know they were working on that. They finally got those put on. They fixed some cracks on those two partition walls where they, there was some drywall issues there that they fixed, but that was all that Barb pointed out to me.
Yeah, it was the, not the emergency door, the handicapped disability door.
Okay.
Going into the center.
Okay.
Yeah, it didn't work, and that's the only one that we have to the center.
We probably need to refresh our list.
Exactly, and what I typically had done last year, Margie is, and we can work with Steve, is to get with Geis Van Buren and Andrew Farmer from COR and revisit their, their punch list and see where are we at with different things, and then, you know...
Okay, we'll have the meeting.
And we need to, someone, I guess, I don't know if you want it to be me as a redevelopment president, or Margie as the chairman, or you as council president, need to see if we can get an update from Boys and Girls Club. Now that they own the three acres, where are they at with their Capitol campaign?
Just ask Joe to reach out to them.
Where are they, yeah, you want to reach out to them, Joe?
I'd love to reach out to them.
Because again, redevelopment item that we need to take care of in the next couple months is this lease.
Well, no, well, no, but the, the, you know, the, the big push was for us to get the property transferred to them. They were driving me crazy, as a matter of fact. So we got them expedited, we got that expedited, we had the property transferred to them, then they went silent. So I've not heard from them since, so I'd like to...
Well, let me know, because I need to get a hold of Mr. Pittman for the RDC members. We're going to have to approve that, I don't know what Tom is calling it, where we agreed to give them $200,000 off the top of the draw from the TIF districts toward, that was our contribution for 10 years. So we were giving them $2 million of TIF money for the new club itself, so we need to paper that thing up and get that thing started, and maybe that'll jumpstart them on their, their capital. That was...
Well, did we not just give them $200,000 out of the fund to the Boys and Girls Club?
We have not given, we have not given the Boys and Girls Club anything yet. We've given the school corporation money off, out of the TIF funds for their three projects.
$400,000.
$400,000, yeah.
Did that come up to give them the $200,000 to the Boys and Girls?
Yeah, we've committed to that.
We've committed to that. That's when Epic United was going to be in, on that property, and we were going to do a multi-phase lease agreement, and...
Oh, okay.
Epic was going to let them use the court. We said we would contribute to that, and that was a vote at the RDC meeting.
So at this time, we have not given them...
We don't have a paper. No, we haven't given them anything yet.
So, but we have given them what's called an in-kind contribution. When they initially moved into the place, they haven't, they've never paid rent. We had a lease, and when you look at it, we should have collected at least $20,000 last year. We haven't collected one penny on it. That was one of the oddities.
They pay rent.
They should be paying rent.
We have not received a penny.
Yeah, we need to check on that.
And we definitely need to check on that.
Yeah.
What is the rent payment?
Supposed to be $2,000 a month.
A month?
Yeah, 10 months.
And you have nothing in your file or records in the computer?
Right.
But you know what, with all due respect there, they were using that before you took office. So, I hate to say it, but the previous clerk treasurer either should have been billing them or should have been tracking that, because they've been there since almost the center opened.
Right.
Center's going to be, it's three years this month, and they've been there the last two years.
Right. So, I want to say in the first years of the community center, there was, I haven't been able to find a lease when they initially moved in, but I did find a lease for the previous fiscal year, and that's the lease that I have right here, that I just actually got today. That specified they were supposed to pay $2,000. I know we haven't received it.
Yeah, because they get the four rooms. They're using the four rooms.
And we still have to provide janitorial services and different things for them.
What is the date on that lease?
The effective, the signed date is January the 6th, 2023, but I believe that was backdated because the lease is actually for 2022 and 2023. So, that date is off, but the lease is actually for 2022 and 2023.
All right. Yeah, we need to look.
That's the proof of payment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll look into it, too.
Yeah.
No problem. I'll follow up with Chris Campbell on both of these issues.
Let's move on, guys. Thank you. Utility Liaison, Counselor Chandler Felton?
Mr. President, I have received a correspondence from, I do believe it's Michael Griffith, and the Support Staff Committee. We will be starting to make arrangements to meet with Indiana Water, Maryville Conservatory District, Independence Hill Conservatory District, and possibly Nipco to start making arrangements for meetings.
Great. Thank you.
What was that for? Just to make arrangements for a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
With the utility liaison, utility company.
Oh, utility liaisons. Okay, good. Thank you.
Moving on to Special Committees, Abandoned and Blighted Properties, Ms. Haynes Edwards.
Mr. President, I also spoke with Michael Griffin, and he also is going to set up a meeting with the following, with the same following committees, the American Water, the Maryville Conservatory District, Independence Hill Conservancy District, and Nipco as well, so we can establish relationships with those committees as well.
Okay. Are you going to have a abandoned and blighted properties committee meeting?
That's what, that's what it's for.
Oh, to talk to-
Yes. I apologize. That is for the abandoned, the blighted and abandoned properties committee. And I also spoke with Vicki. I met with her and Sheila about the committee as well, so I got some information, and so we're going to move forward to establish relationships and move forward to see what we can do.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to the semi-quintcentennial, better thank Michael for that, committee, and the chair is Shawna Haynes Edwards.
I've also gotten email with, from our town manager to also assist with that project as well for the quintcentennial committee, so we will be-
Can't say that fast at times.
Yes. So, we will be meeting as well. That is not until 2026, so we have some time.
Great. Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Special Town Projects, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have a lot of upcoming town events that's going on. First of all, our spring newsletter is being completed, and so that'll be coming out. You guys get that in the mail soon, some new information. And we've kind of revised it a little bit to try to make it a little bit more, with more information, but more easier to read, and more valuable information on there, too. Some of the upcoming events that we have planned, and these are all on our town website and Facebook page, you'll find them. We're planning for our Juneteenth celebration, which is going to be Juneteenth. We're looking to have a movie night and some other things planned for that evening. For Independence Day, July 3rd, we're looking to have our fireworks. That's going to start around 9:00 PM at Maryville High School, very similar to what it was last year. And then, on actual 4th of July, we will have our annual 4th of July parade. We're meeting for that on Monday, on the 18th. That parade is, should be from 11 till 1:00. That's the time we have scheduled. We have an annual job fair coming up, July 24th, at the Barber, at the Dean and Barber Center. That's going to be from 11:30 to 2:30. And then, we also are in the planning and the making for our annual National Night Out. We already have our 4th of July flyer. I'm going to pass this around to you guys, so you can see it. Our 4th of July flyer is already up and getting ready to go out. So, we have a lot of town events that we're currently working on right now for, for the summer, for the, yeah, for the upcoming summer.
Great. Thank you.
And I can go on to the next one, the Lake County.
Very well. Department and Commission Reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District. Our representative is Mrs. Neal.
Yes, thank you again. So, the only thing is that we, I have a meeting coming up this month, and that's when I'll do that one-on-one, little special training. They have all newcomers for that, so I'll be participating in that. But also, I want to just let residents know that they do have a household hazardous waste collection. It is at the Lake County Fairgrounds in Crown Point. It is March the 23rd from 9:00 to 2:00. And that's where residents can go and drop off different types of waste. That information is also located on the town website and on the Facebook page, so that's this March 23rd from 9:00 to 2:00. They do have other locations, but the closest one for us is going to be the Lake County location, and that is for hazardous waste collection.
And that does involve paint, leftover paint in paint cans? And the reason why I'm bringing this up-
Yes.
Is I've had several calls over the summer. I got all this paint, what should I do with it? I'm putting out there, they're not picking it up, Waste Management. No, it is a chemical waste, and it should be given, as you said, by the Lake County Fairgrounds.
By the Lake County Fairgrounds.
Right. Thank you.
And like I said, they do have several other locations throughout Indiana, and one of the things that I'm going to look to see is how we can actually possibly have Maryville as a location one year, because they do have Mid Highland and Lake, yeah, Lake County, but to see about actually having one, or can we run a smaller one just for our town. So, we'll look into that. But until then, this is the one that's available on March 23rd.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Neal.
That's all.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Ms. Hardaway?
No report, because the meeting is not until next month.
Okay. I'll just announce for South Shore, there's been kind of a shakeup by state legislators to have qualifications for the board members, and I think it's nine or 10 members of the board may have to come off. What they're going to do is, board members now no longer need to just be involved in the hospitality industry or have knowledge of it. They need to really be in it. And by in it, I mean as a manager of a restaurant, hotel, a general manager, an executive in a hospitality setting like a casino or something like that. So, they're really kind of changing the criteria for board members. The idea is that board members should be in the business to decide how that money's going to be spent, increase tourism.
Also, there's going to be a change in the way they administer their budget.
Yes.
It's no longer going to be county-administered, it's going to be state-administered.
It is, with the county's going to have to approve, right, the budget moving forward?
Correct.
So, there's some changes there. I'm sure Deanna will update us as soon as she has some more information for us.
And that's pending legislation, Mr. President, or is that passed?
That, that's-
They're out of the session.
It's presented. It's going-
I think it's pending, I think it's pending governor's approval and signature.
Signature.
Yeah. Fire Territory Board, Mrs. Neal and Ms. Hardaway?
There will be a meeting March 19th.
Thank you. Department Reports, Police Chief Costa Nusus.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything to report as far as the police department, but I do have to report that the women's self-defense class pretty much are out of control with all the requests we got. So, initially, we said that everybody was welcome, and we quickly figured out that we had to do that. We had to do a maximum capacity, so the class is all booked up now, but we are going to be having another one sometime in early to midsummer, but we'll be putting it out there.
Mrs. Ford, here in the audience tonight, was one of those who did not make the deadline and was unable to sign up for the course, so there'll be other ones coming up.
How much is the maximum capacity, Chief?
Right now, it's 50.
50? Okay.
Did we over-promote, Chief? Sorry.
Little bit.
That's a good thing.
They're waiting, they're wanting, they're wanting it to be way before the summer. They're like, do it again, like, right away, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working, we're hoping, we're hoping June.
That's good. They'll be happy.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
I just want you to know, Chief, I did get some requests from high school and junior high student, parents who were wanting to know, could the young, were you hosting one for, like, high school and junior high school?
That's 14 and up. Oh, it's 14 and up? Okay.
Ms. Sheila Shine, Planning and Building Department?
I have no report tonight, Mr. President. We are working away, getting things done, getting prepared for the busy building season.
Great, that's a report. It is a report.
So, you do have a report.
It's a little bit.
Mr. King, Street Department, what is your report tonight, please?
Uh, we've been very busy. We've been all over town, again, picking up trash is a continued problem. I mean, we, I couldn't tell you how many bags of trash we pick up, and we have a crew out almost every day. We've also had a small shipping crew out, picking up straggler branches from last year, since the weather's been so nice. We've had a truck out taking care of that. We've been working out in the Panhandle, doing some shoulder repairs to Clay Street, which is just about done. We're going to start planting flowers here pretty soon, I guess. I've been, I've been told. But, but I do, I do want to say one thing. We're talking about the, the development of the new town center. We, we want to remind Shawna that we did get $250,000 or $275,000 from NERCZ for planning for that development, so.
Yeah.
But we do have, we do have that in our pocket, so I just want to remind you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do you have any updates on, on street paving, Steve?
I do not, so, so right now, we're working on, I've got Robinson Engineering working on the, the ones and two streets on our low-rating map, gathering some information, gathering some quantities. We'll put some estimates together, and then we'll present to the council, probably in a workshop of what we have, you know, if you want to go a full program, how much it's going to cost. We'll, that'll be, we'll have that shortly. We're working on it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Moving on tonight to General Orders, we have no first reading ordinances. We do have two second reading ordinances we referred to earlier. The first one is ordinance 24-03. It's an ordinance appropriating additional monies in the annual budget for the Park Department.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Yuzlak with a second by Ms. Hardaway to approve ordinance 24-03. The proposed amount is $75,072. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. We already had the public comment portion of this ordinance. I believe we can move right on to the vote. Is that correct, Counselor?
Correct.
Mr. January?
Sure. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven to zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 24-04. It's an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in a 2024 budget motor vehicle highway restricted fund. The requested amount is $50,000 and no cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of ordinance 24-04. Open for comments. Hearing no comments, and again, a reminder, we took care of public comment earlier this evening. Mr. January, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven to zero, motion carries. Ordinance 24-04 is approved. We have no resolutions tonight. We have no BZA actions. Is that right, Ms. Shine?
Yes, Mr. President, no actions.
I'm not aware of any old business beforeers tonight.
Mr. President, if I could, back to Rhonda's committee on the town projects. Rhonda, if you can, between you and Chaz, if you can get me any of the electronic versions of these?
Yes.
We have the commitment from Lamar that if the digitals aren't sold out, we throw up this artwork on signs within Maryville, so we can do, the town gets complimentary advertising, so I just need the, and if Chaz has got it, or if you have it, we'll get it in the right format and get it put up.
Yep. Chaz will probably be able to get it to you, I'm pretty sure. Thank you.
Ms. Shine, there are no BZA large gathering actions, right?
No, no BZA or large gathering.
I have no old business beforeers. Is there any new business? Hearing done. Public comment. We are open for public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for that. Seeing no public comment, I do have a variety of announcements. The Redevelopment Commission meeting will be March 26th at 6:15. Reminder, the Plan, or the Plan Commission meeting will be March 19th at 6:30. The next town council meeting is March 26th at 6:30. And I want to remind everyone about the town council workshop scheduled for March 20th at 6:30 here at Town Hall. This is going to be an exclusive workshop to talk about code enforcement issues. I encourage all council members to attend, as well as the other invitees I had on the email, Chief, in code enforcement. We'd like to meet all the code enforcement officers and have them in the meeting.
And a RDC workshop on the 19th, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Pettit.
And I would like to announce the passing of Mr. David Chetister. He was a past Maryville resident and also a judge in Porter County for a number of years. He passed away this past weekend.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right. The other item I want to remind everyone about, and it's going to be in the newsletter, is the, Monday, April 8th is going to be the Maryville Momentum Comprehensive Plan Major Recommendations. It'll be at the Mike Anderson Event Center, inside the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, next to the Weiss Field. Mr. Pettit?
You caught, you caught them all.
Tried to.
Unless you want to hang out in the Robinson atrium.
Well, that, thank you very much. I forgot that. So, we encourage all residents to attend that. You're going to see these boards on display, as well as many others, and it's going to be kind of a wrap-up meeting from the consultant to complete the ideas for the master plan. Then the council will take formal action on it after that meeting. So, that's on April 8th. Again, I added that to the newsletter, so everyone can see it when we send it out.
What time is that meeting?
That's going to be, I'm sorry, at 5:30 PM, and we're going to have two rooms for us, because we're going to have a lot of information to share. And Marty Schucker will be giving that presentation. Anything else? Hearing nothing else, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second, third.